Good afternoon.
Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Please stand.
You just told us to sit.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes and reports received in five.
Uh, we just have the collectors, November 2024.
Okay. Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings and events.
We've got several Christmas things coming up. We have one today for the sheriff's Christmas luncheon. Thursday, we have the emerging leaders for Central Bank here, and then the judge's retirement. I think that's about it. It's worth mentioning.
I have a few to add to that. Parks meeting for... Where's Eric? Parks meeting at noon today? And Posse has the Christmas thing.
This evening, yeah.
This evening. I have a Mid-Mall Regional Planning Commission meeting in Ashland tomorrow, and I think Jeff had everything else.
Yeah, I've got everything too. Now, today, Thomas Lawson Price has a social this evening. American Legion has their Christmas party, sheriff's luncheon in Posse, so, yep, that's all I've got as well. Okay, presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests, and we're gonna do years of service certificates first. So, I will come down there, and then I will ask you to come up, and we will present these to you and take pictures. How's that? We've got Randy Beckman, 30 years.
Thank you.
Okay, you want to get in there for a picture?
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Pat Cakes, good old Pat. Yep. Another 20 to go.
Okay.
Pat's on class A.
Yep.
Oh, my phone's acting up this time.
Yeah, no, my gun ain't that long.
Okay, sorry.
For the corner, Jeff.
Oh, my goodness. I think I got it now. Okay, we're trying to get it. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
You gotta cut back if you're in there to picture.
Aaron Lott, 25 years. He rode his tricycle to work.
When he started, yeah, with the plow and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's the 25 years.
Thank you.
Melissa Johnson, 20 years.
Oh, wow.
That's right by your words.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Shannon Kleithermas, 20 years.
You can't go anywhere either.
No, he can't. None of these people can go anywhere, so. We need your knowledge and everything else.
I got your screen.
Yeah, believe me, I know.
And Janelle Edgell, 20 years of service. So you were 10 years old when you started?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I think that's it.
One more. Judy's at 20? We're doing 20s, right?
No, we're doing...
Yeah, she's... She didn't want to... Just a second. She's giving off the desk.
Okay.
All right.
I hit "special" this time.
It's on special, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Next, we have soda found Christmas drawings. Melody.
I guess we'll just let you guys do the drawing and...
This is money from the soda machines here. We have a little committee together, so this $50 goes to 10 different people, so...
Yeah, I get to be the bad guy. Going in deep. Make sure I just got one there. Jeff Elster. Oh, Susan Avers.
Susan.
All right.
Thanks.
There you go, yeah.
Neples Anderson.
Must be present to win.
Jenny Gurren.
Stacy Duncan. Oh, she's gonna owe me for that one. That's one of our pre-trial, right?
Chesney Schulte.
Yeah.
How do you know about pre-trial?
I read, I read works. Make sure my name's not on there.
I got two as well. Richard McClellan.
How many you got here?
10.
All right. Paige Adams.
I'm not.
Favorite employee's name.
Two more?
Two more.
Kinley Ken.
There you go, EMS.
One more.
One more.
Yeah, Jeff, go ahead.
Sherry Cullenberg. There you go. Oh, he needs that one, I think, for that.
I did draw, you kidding me?
Yeah. Thanks, Melody.
You know, we started collecting with County Toys for Tots three, four years ago, and last year, we had 63 boxes of toys. This year, we have 96 boxes of toys. So, I guess 100 is probably gonna be about the max, but anyway, I wanna thank everybody who did contribute Toys for Tots. And so, I have a $100 bill I'm going to give to one person who... Mitchell Lot, Public Works.
Oh, very good.
Two years in a row.
Right, good job.
Okay.
He did one last year, too.
Pretty sure.
He puts in a lot. He does.
That's...
He's very generous.
That was...
Very generous.
That was wonderful. Okay.
Text him already.
We will move forward, and we have a commission comments. Bid to Contracts, the JC Rep Contract for Economic Development Services for 2025.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Just saying. Appreciate the opportunity again to be here this morning. You know, so obviously, it's been an exciting year this year as far as economic development's concerned. Probably one of the biggest challenges with economic development is the time it takes from, you know, kind of a concept to reality. So, yeah, we've had a lot of advancement and progress on projects this year. And looking forward to 2025, calendar year 2025, to start to see some of these physically take shape. You know, we've enjoyed the partnership and appreciate the partnership, both public and private. But County's been a great partner with JC Rep. You know, much of the staff, as well as the commissioners, we've had the opportunity to work directly with on priority efforts. You know, we're gonna continue to move forward on key development areas for the community. So, you know, we continue to talk about the need for workforce and housing, so that will continue to be one of our top priorities. You know, again, kind of going back to that, it takes time to start to see these developments take shape. That being one of those, you know, you can make a decision that you want to move forward, but ultimately, just those... You know, sometimes the public processes and the necessary steps and requirements just take time. So, we are extremely excited that we've got some great projects in the works that I think we're gonna start to see physically take shape this year. You know, so a lot on the infrastructure side, housing, continue to work with some partners throughout the community and the state on other key vital infrastructure assets, you know, our Missouri levee on the north side of the river, looking at opportunities for improving that structure and the flood protection that the state of Missouri and the Federal Corps of Engineers are looking at, as well, some other infrastructure projects. Exciting community development-type projects. I know many of the commissioners and other folks are excited about some of the tourism opportunities we have for the community. Just last night, City Council first heard, and a public hearing was held on a tax increment finance, a TIF redevelopment and a community improvement district for the Christie Drive Rock Quarry Complex, which will get redeveloped into a mixed-use facility, which will include a youth sports complex and other commercial retail and potential hotel development out there. Look for that to bring, you know, tens of thousands of new visitors in the community in the future years. Other downtown redevelopment for the new Conference Center Hotel Parking Garage, as well, working on our traditional, you know, business industrial development. This year's been exciting. We had multiple projects with even just one key industry with Unilever. Their commitment to investing 100-plus million dollars this year and some growth opportunities is extremely exciting and provides confidence of their longevity here. So, gonna continue to work with our existing industries throughout the community, but also in the works are some conversations with businesses that are looking at being located in central Missouri, and Cole County and Jefferson City are on those lists. So, excited for the opportunity, appreciate the partnership, and happy to answer any questions you may have, but, you know...
And you left off the multi-noel.
Oh, didn't want to steal your glory if he's gonna talk about that, but you bet on... You know, and that's one of them. We've seen the development taking place. And so, you know, looking, very excited to start to see that take place with other projects that are in the works as well.
I was gonna throw out there, we don't hear a whole lot about it, 'cause you have things that people are looking for coming into the area that you'll have to sign non-disclosure agreements with, so you can't just be out there publicly saying who's looking for what. There's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. We've met, when I say Wade, Luke, and Paul have sat down, took the time, and we've looked at some other projects where some people are... Just need some answers, and so they've got a good team that can sit down with us. And if anybody's looking to come to Cole County, I'm gonna steal some of the city's thunder saying, we're open for business. We're here to try to make things happen, not to shut things down, so...
You bet.
Let us know, and we'll keep putting y'all to work and make you earn that check. So, I really do appreciate it. Y'all were very receptive to sitting down with us and getting things done, so...
We enjoy the opportunity to sit down, and, you know, our role is to help facilitate. So, you know, understanding the priorities, the prospects or the opportunities or the interests that are out there, and seeing how we can advance those. You know, again, it doesn't happen overnight, but it takes continued effort to move the ball forward. And so, we want to continue to be that support system with the county and the partners throughout the community to help keep moving those forward.
Give them a push in the right direction or where they need to go to get their answers, so...
And sometimes the answer's no, you know, sometimes it's yes, but it's better to, you know, determine the no now versus letting it linger, so...
Yep. So, thank you.
You bet.
I appreciate the work your organization does, Luke, and just expand for a second on the NDAs, those non-disclosure agreements. They are really tight, and the public doesn't always realize, you know, we were invited early to visit, or at least I was, on some of the Unilever issues, and none of that ever leaked out until they were ready to make that announcement.
Yeah.
It's good.
You bet. There's a lot of positivity out there. Sometimes it can't all be disclosed openly until it's complete and finalized, but...
Well, and some of them don't happen, so that employer, that big company that turned us down, isn't identified with retribution, you might say. So, those NDAs work. And appreciate you, the success of your organization. And I'll make a motion that we execute the agreement with Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership for calendar year 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Luke.
Okay. Approval of Stentograph LLC sole source.
This is the sole source for the stenograph machines for the court reporters that Judge Beadham presented a couple weeks ago. The ad has ran in the paper, and today I'm just needing approval of the sole source. And then I do have a quote attached for $18,885. Is that still correct? I don't know. Okay.
That's coming of our technology, man. We're not asking you to pay for it. We're asking you to approve the sole source.
Yeah, I like that you had that part in there. Makes it so much easier to... Thank you. We didn't approve the sole source last time we talked about it?
We approved to run the ad, to do the ad, so this is now signing.
So, nobody came in, and we're signing the contract, then?
Correct.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the Stentograph LLC sole source and the contract. I think that's it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Renewal of contract for detention services at Bruce Normile.
I have a renewal contract with Bruce Normile Detention Facility located in Kirksville, Missouri. The rate remains the same at $80 a day. This is in the event that we have overflow out of our detention facility and need a bed.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract with Bruce Normile Detention Center in Kirksville, Missouri. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Contract renewal for Newman, Conley, and Ruth for legal work in 2025 for the Assessors Office.
This is the annual agreement between Newman, Conley, and Ruth in the Assessors' Office to handle assessment appeals to the State Tax Commission. Chris S. could not be here today, so he asked that I come and present this to the County Commission.
Are they the same prices as before?
Well, they're the same hourly charge, but they increased the not to exceed, which doesn't necessarily mean you're gonna reach that amount. It's just so we don't have to come back and keep amending it to the agreement like we did last year.
I'll make a motion to accept the renewal of contract... I'm sorry. Yes, renewal of contract with Newman, Conley, and Ruth for legal work in '25 for the Assessors' Office. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Approval and signing of Google Fiber License Agreement for Public Works.
So, this is actually titled as a non-exclusive license agreement between Cole County and Google Fiber Missouri LLC for the installation of network facilities in the county public right-of-way. So, Google is coming into town. They're installing a lot of fiber optic cable for communications and internet throughout Cole County and actually Jefferson City as well. And they approached us with the concept of doing a license agreement. This will actually protect us and Google. Does allow them to be in our right-of-way, to have their facilities in our right-of-way. We will require, or part of the agreement requires that they carry general liability insurance of $2 million, and they also have to provide us with a performance bond of $5,000. So, we've probably been working on it, Jill, at least four, six months or so from the time they first approached us. Wasn't a big rush at the time, and got through a few things. This is a little new for us. I believe, back before my time at Public Works, we did require a bond if a utility was installing something on our right-of-way, but it was just for the construction. This will be for the entirety of the, or the term of the agreement. They will have to have this bond in place in case there's some work that isn't done or something is not fixed to the property owner's liking, if they're in our right-of-way or to our liking. So, this is gonna be a good thing going forward, and as we approve this one, we're gonna look at doing these for all utilities within our right-of-way. It just provides protections for both. And we tend to get complaints if utilities are working within our right-of-way, disturbing their front yard and that kind of thing. That's kind of the norm. I know the commission gets a lot of them from time to time, and having something like this in place would give us a little more authority to address it instead of just telling them, "Go do this." This does provide some authority there. Again, it offers protections for both them and us, so I'd recommend approval of this agreement. And it's been reviewed by Jill. Again, it's approved and reviewed by Jill, so is there any questions?
I've got kind of a layperson, a general question about Google lines and other lines. So, we're gonna proceed with this. Do they put enough capacity in there for someone else to come along and use the same already ditched, dug, and covered kind of thing? Or will we see Google be followed by someone else, someone else, someone else, and they keep coming and coming back and laying another cable next to the other cable and dig again? Do you know how that works, or...
There's a little bit of that, unfortunately. I know we meet MediaCom, there's Socket.
Right.
I'm missing a few.
Are they fibered them? They're all fibered, too?
Google's fibered, right?
No, I meant these other...
Socket's fibered.
Yeah, their socket's just like a cable.
They do have underground, yeah. It's similar. They do have some fiber.
Cable, are they fibered?
It's some fiber in parts of the county. But it provides the cable TV and also the internet and everything, too. So, it's common to see these all over the place. Now, what we see is typically, you know, if one goes into an area, they kind of monopolize that area, and so another entity's not gonna come in, in a smaller residential area. When you get into like Jefferson City and you got a lot of, you know, mass of people and business and commercial and all that, you might see a little more in the same corridor. For example, where I'm at on McCarty Street, we got two, you know, along McCarty Street, not including MediaCom. So, there's plenty to there, but like out in the county, you get into a residential area, you might just see one of them, you know, some of these out in the Bordsville area. That's Calibite, I think, so...
Yeah, we actually had pretty good luck with them, so you're saying this will... If we have problems, 'cause they had a lot of out-of-town, out-of-state people coming in, doing the work, and they didn't fix the yards up as they should have, so this would give us something with some teeth that we can go in there.
If there's a problem, we notify the contractor, who's the representative of Google Fiber, and if they're not responsive, then we go to the bonding company, and that usually gets their attention pretty hard, so...
Yeah.
But... Did that fully answer your question? I mean, it's...
Well, yes, I... Maybe we don't want someone to ladies master network, but at the same time, folks do get upset when, after the first ones come through and the lawn came back, you might say, and then it's ripped up again.
Well, you see some of the city alleys, and they've got so many, they've got blue and orange and all these different... And they just... One gets done, and they kind of resurface it, and somebody else comes along and digs it up for something else. So, that's where it would be nice.
It could be a nuisance for us if we're doing a project within our right-of-way. However, the utility has to remove or relocate them at their expense. We don't pay for any relocations that are something that's in our right-of-way, and that's in here, too.
Okay.
So, all right. Okay, so...
Yep.
Yep.
Can I let you off easy today? No, you've got another... We're just getting started. Make a motion to approve and sign the Google Fiber License Agreement.
Second.
For Public Works.
For Public Works, okay.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Renewal four for generator maintenance services with Cummins Inc.
This is the fourth renewal for our generator maintenance with Cummins Incorporated. They did not propose an increase on their pricing this year. I did talk with Greg, and he's been pleased with their services. So, our recommendation is to renew it for another year.
Okay, good. Make a motion to renew the generator maintenance services with Cummins Incorporated.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Renewal one for electric services.
Renew it for another year.
Make a motion to renew the electrical services with Meyer Electric Company.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. Renewal three for uniforms, Aramark for Public Works.
This is the third renewal with Aramark. They proposed a 2% increase for their services. Eric and Public Works have been pleased with their services, and our recommendation is to renew it with them for another year.
Make a motion to renew the uniform for Public Works with Aramark.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Renewal one for pest management services with Mike's Pest Control.
This is the first renewal with Mike's Pest Control Services. They did not have an increase on their pricing, and Greg's been pleased with their services, so our recommendation is to renew it for another year.
Make a motion to renew the pest management services with Mike's Pest Control.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, new business, accounts payable review.
Ask for approval for accounts payable pending review.
I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable pending review. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, discussion of carpet in the judges' chambers. Judge Beadham had come down last week, I guess.
This is the former treasurer's office. It's gonna...
Yeah, come on up.
This is the former treasurer's office. They tell me it's gonna be tasked actually for court reporters, but we had asked, could we have new carpeting? It's been a long time since the carpeting was there, and it's been well-worn. I don't know the week here, whether it's squares or it's roll carpeting like we put in the courtroom.
I think they have something already bid on it.
Well, I got an estimate, so I knew whether I was talking about two grand or 25 grand, you know, in terms of that.
So, basically, what you can get for the 22, 35, then, is what we're looking at today, then?
I mean, and I don't, I mean, if you want to do it with squares, that's fine, too. That's, I just needed an idea of how much money we're talking about, and I think we're in good shape budget-wise on the courtroom renovation.
And Scruggs is on state contract, too, so we don't have to worry about going over on that, so...
Most of their carpet is on state contract, and I know Greg does like doing the squares more so than the...
I think so, too. If someone gets run, you can pull one up.
Does Scruggs do the squares?
Yes, yes.
So, you just want to do a not to exceed what he has on the estimate, or...
That's fine. So, we're speaking of the former treasurer's office as opposed to what it says judges' chambers?
Well...
Or is that part of it, too?
My understanding is they want to task it for two court reporters instead of for a judge.
Okay.
It's not my problem. I just told the court reporters to ask if they could have it painted, and that seemed to be no problem, but they could have the carpet replaced because it's been a long time and it's been hard used.
Right. I have no question about that, and...
Those offices were painted when I was over there.
Yeah, that's what...
That was more than five or two years ago. But, just saying, the paint's fairly new in there. They did have to paint over old, dark... They did have to paint over old dark, what do they call it, paneling.
Ladies, ask. If you don't wanna paint it, say you don't wanna paint it. I said I would ask.
I'm just saying, it was painted not probably five years ago.
But you didn't get new carpeting.
No, no, no. Carpet's old. Carpet's never been, was, had not been...
It has character now, Judge.
I said I would present it.
I'm just being...
Stop being, and let's, I'm gonna make a motion, is that right? Or is this just a discussion today?
I think we can go ahead and just approve the, we've got an estimate here. If something comes up and it's more than that, then we can...
Do, doesn't do not exceed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to proceed with the Scruggs lumber quote for the carpet for the former treasurer's office, and now will be two court reporters' office. Not to exceed two thousand two hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Carpet down in your courtroom, then?
It's down.
Okay, I don't know if they were still here working on that, too.
No, they got, we'd like to have a little more time to do some stuff, but be that as it may, you should come by and see. The chairs are great.
I saw one that had it tore out or running some cable and stuff underneath there, so I'll have to make a trip up there and take a look at it.
I came by yesterday. It looks really nice. It really does. And you can get fourteen jurors sitting there now, right?
Always could.
Yeah, but it looks like there's thirteen swivel seats and one chair had to be added.
Right.
But that's the way it was.
We've always had that chair there for somebody who couldn't use the swivel seat. But we also have a platform that we were able to carpet, so we can put sixteen in there if we need to.
So when they go through voir dire, do they ask the prospective juror if they can use a swivel seat? Because if you get two of them, you got a problem? Just kidding.
I'm not gonna be conducting any jury trials. I don't know what they're gonna say. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. How many there is?
Fourteen.
Okay, we breezed through that. Do we have any unfinished business? Here and now, I would...
I will make a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Section 610.021 of the revised statutes of Missouri. The commission will go into closed session to discuss the following: existing and proposed security systems under Section 610.021, subsection 20.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Sam.
Yes.
Harry.
Yes.
Jeff.
Yes.
Let me go get my notes. Permission.
Did you get extra food for lunch?
I got extra food just for you, big boy.
Alright, we'll leave.
Come on by. The water's fine.